We're calling to order ten for the 12th of August. I'm with the United States. And to the Republic, our wishes stands, one nation under one law, and the principle of liberty, justice, and法治.
Okay, let's start right off with the first public hearing, and that is for the fiscal year 2024 property tax classification. The Upton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on FY 2024 property tax classification with the Upton Board of Assessors on November 14th, 2023 at 7:15. It's 7:15. You have a long time to sit.
Um, I didn't notice. You want to do that first?
Sure.
Um, so I didn't realize that it was 7 o'clock, so my apologies. So one of the things I was going to ask after the hearing was to move out of order. Um, item three B, I'm just signing on now, so I don't have the agenda in mind. Um.
Yeah.
That way Val didn't have to say through a bunch of other items, and could we cover the topic of the change in senior tax workoff program and the amendments to senior tax workoff that Val can go through, and then we'll be able to set for 7:15.
Well, then I will go to the next public hearing. And that's a public hearing on the final series four in Richmond, Rashford, and Sons Brew House, 8 Grove Street, Upton, Mass. Notice is hereby given under chapter 138, section 15A of the Mass General Laws that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 7:05 p.m. by the Board of Selectmen, Town Hall, Main Street, Upton, Mass. On the application of Brian Goodman to new final series four in Richmond, wine and malt beverages at Rashford and Sons Brew House, 8 Grove Street, Upton, Mass on the following described premises: single floor, 600 square feet brewery, 60 square feet of wine 1440 square feet of tavern, front lot, 2,500 square feet outdoor paid lot. We'll open the public hearing. Brian?
Yes, so we have started this process way back in January with federal licensing, which got approved. We started at the state level in April, which got approved. So our janitor closet right now is legal winery, which personally, I don't know if I drink any wine that comes out of it legally. We can produce wine there. We are going to be contracting a fellow farmer winery, Locky and Tina Franklin, produce wine for Rashford and Sons Brew House. And we just really want to offer, so the way I see it, our taproom offering, our taproom product is your community gathering place. And we monetize that community gathering place by producing products that we believe in and that we're passionate about. And there's a lot of people who want to spend time in that community gathering place that don't like beer or seltzer that we produce. So we want to offer wine. We do not offer hard alcohol because hard alcohol will, I think, change the character of our business. Where wine, I don't think there's any good faith argument that says that wine will change the character of our business, which is why we want to offer wine to give our customers more options to hang out and enjoy the community gathering place. And I think that's it.
Any questions, Laura?
No questions. I have a motion.
I'm first here. I move that the board vote to approve the application of Brian Goodman for an alteration of licensed premises to pour beer and wine in the same tavern spaces at Rashford and Sons Brew House, 8 Grove Street, Upton, Mass.
I'll second. All in favor?
I.
Majority vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. This is the most contentious event of the evening. Thank you both. Thank you.
You have one more.
We have one more.
Oh, one more. Oh, I did.
Yes.
This one, who knows? Okay.
Notice is hereby given under chapter 138, section 15A of the Mass General Laws that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 7:05 p.m. by the Board of Selectmen at the Town Hall, Main Street, Upton, Mass on the application of Brian Goodman for the alteration of licensed premises to pour beer and wine in the same tavern spaces at Rashford and Sons Brew House, 8 Grove Street, Upton, Mass on the following described premises: single floor, 600 square feet brewery, 60 square feet of wine, 1440 square feet of tavern, front lot, 2,500 square feet outdoor paid lot. I guess this is just because of the change in the premise?
So it is, please take my layman's understanding of the 19 series licensure with a grain of salt. Um, the way, so the farm in Massachusetts, my understanding, the farmer's series licensure is custom for the mom and pop shop that we like, style that we run. But the rules are the way they are for a reason, so we need to have not only the winery approved and the wine pouring approved, but also the mixed pouring approved. It all makes sense. I'm not going to put anyone to sleep talking about my layman's understanding of it. If you want me to, I'm happy to, but we need the approval to pour both at the same time. Again, I don't think a good faith argument could be made that it will change the character of the business. And thank you, everyone, for your time. That's it.
No questions?
Motion. I move the board vote to approve the application of Brian Goodman for an alteration of licensed premises for beer and wine in the same tavern spaces at Rashford and Sons Brew House, 8 Grove Street, Upton, Mass.
Second, all in favor?
I.
I. Majority vote.
Again, thank you. I hope this was the most contentious vote tonight. Everyone, thank you very much, as always. Much appreciated. Have a lovely day. Um, to Madam Chair, I just got a text from Sandy, who checked to see if, of course, I can remember, now, um, Brett Simms could make tonight's meeting. He said his apologies, he can't make it for tonight. Um, so the next hearing, because you will be recusing yourself, will have to continue to December 5th with no action taken to, um, seven.
So. Lewis. Look. We don't have a majority board for your public hearing, because I have to recuse myself, and Mr. Spines cannot make it.
Okay.
So we have to continue till December?
December 5th. I'm recommending 7:30.
7:30, December 5th.
Okay. Unfortunately, with only one member who can vote, we can't take any sort of action. Uh, so, uh, our only option is to continue it to December 5th.
My apologies. Thank you for coming.
No problem. Thank you.
We'll see you in December, Saturday, next week.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Is it 7:15 yet?
Not yet.
7:10.
So I'm.
We're going to be up screwed up.
They can get you fishing.
All right, most of the public hearing, all those that I'm saying.
Um.
Let's get out of it. So, Max?
So that's where we have, we have two things. One, because it may not take, um, long, Dennis is on, and, um, he could go over the private roads, no plow list. We can act on that.
Sure. Mr. Westgate?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This will be quick.
Okay.
Uh, each year, the Board of Selectmen takes action on our policy to allow the Department of Public Works to use its resources to provide snow and ice program for private roads. I have emailed the board a list of the roads that we consider each year. During the summer, the Public Works Department reviews these roads to make sure that they are in good enough condition for our trucks to travel on them and not damage the roads. And I'm happy to report they all are. Brush has been cut back, potholes have been filled, so my recommendation to the board is to approve the list as presented.
No questions? We have a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the snow plowing of private ways as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I.
I. Majority vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Do you want to stop the? 7:15.
Um, we could have Valerie go through the senior tax workoff changes, since those should really probably take the remaining three minutes until we can all check.
I'm Valerie. I'm the principal assessor. And the Board of Assessors is pleased to announce two increases in senior tax programs due to the fact that on October 4th, Governor Mon Healy signed into law the tax relief bill. One of them is the senior tax workout program. It increased from $1,500 a year to $2,000 a year. In our program includes a CPA exemption proportionate to the work off. For example, a $1,000 work off amount will have a $30 CPA exemption for a total exemption of $1,030. The senior tax work off is technically an abatement, and it comes out of our overlay. The other one is the senior circuit breaker income tax credit. We know it as the senior circuit breaker credit program. It increased from $1,200 for fiscal year 2023 to $2,400 for fiscal year 2024. So both programs are effective for fiscal year 2024. The senior income, the circuit breaker income tax, matches the qualified applicant's circuit breaker income tax credit. If they receive $1,200 for calendar year 2022, we match the same exemption. And these are, well, the governor did say that they may increase them yearly based on their budgeting. So if they do, we would also increase our amount, the state amounts. Because we have a secret program.
So in reflecting this change, the board also has in the packet a redline version of the senior and veterans property tax workoff abatement that shows changes to the adopted program where we specifically referenced halfway down that first page, maximum payment is 1,500. Staff is recommending that we basically just replace that with maximum payment amount is the current state amount for section 5K and 5N of chapter 59 of the general laws. That way, if there are increases, it automatically gets applied. And then there is just, um, uh, one change on the second page that talks about applications being completed annually. And on the third page, one other change where under tracking reporting under subsection two, rather than having each senior veteran after completion of work, or any participant worked, those are the only changes besides the referencing of section 5K, 5N of chapter 59.
No questions?
Motion. I move that the board vote to amend the senior and veterans property tax workoff payment policy as proposed.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I.
Majority vote. Who wants to stop? I'd open the public hearing for the tax property tax classification. The Upton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on FY 2024 property tax classification with the Upton Board of Assessors on November 14th, 2023 at 7:15 p.m. The public hearing is intended as a way for taxpayers to express their views and ask questions about whether the town can adopt different rates for the different classes of property. Taxpayers are welcome to participate and present their views authorly in writing or in writing. Written requests must be received prior to the meeting or later than November 13th, 2023 by 4 p.m. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should call or sign to the remote meeting. Upton has four classes of property in the town and one tax rate. The classes are residential, commercial, industrial, and personal. Assessors are planning to recommend a single rate for all four classes of property. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact the assessors officer via the 85291002. Okay.
Here. Valerie, the principal assessor. And our tax classification hearing is for fiscal year 2024. We're in an interim tax year. Our value assessment date is as of January 1st, 2023 for fiscal year 2024. All values are analyzed by reviewing the following. Residential values use real estate sales from calendar year 2022, and if necessary, a portion of 2021. Commercial and industrial values are all sources of written returns of information for real property from calendar year 2022 and property income and expenses. Personal property values are cost tables, are used with cost tables, and use of written returns of information on business assets from calendar year 2022. Our townwide value change is not as great this year as it was last year. We have increased our residential parcel count, six parcels. We had 3,085. We have 3,91 now. We have increased in 81,387 dollars, or 0.08%. Are, we don't, do not have any open space. Our commercial parcels decreased by seven parcels. We had 103, we're down to 96. But the value increased 890,210, but the value difference was a decrease of 0.02%. Our industrial parcel size did not change. However, our value increase did. It increased 1,816,860, or 0.6%. Our personal property accounts increased by five. And the value increased 6,304, 6,304,575, or 15.20%. Our total tax amount for the whole town increased 90,146,032, or 1.05%. This is much less than fiscal year 2023, which increased between 2022 and 2023, 27.98%. Our exempt value, actually, we have six more parcels because we have more state and town owned land. And the value of those parcels is 5,472,600, or 0.9%. Those were good. Our taxable value summary, current versus the previous five years. So we get recertified every five years. We're in the second year of our, since our last certification in fiscal year 2022. So, as we can see in the graph, between 2022 and 2023 was that huge increase, 27.98%. But this year, between 2023 and 2024, we only increased 5.17%. And that was a more steady increase than prior, the prior year. It's more in line with the other interim years in the past. So that was a good, a good, some good results there. And, and to have a few other things I wanted to touch on, the increase of the residential parcels on, on the first page is from large parcels of land split into lots. And the seven commercial parcel changes, they, there was a more assemblage of smaller parcels into a larger lot and conversion from commercial to residential. We did capture five new personal property accounts. So that is why there was an increase on our grid on the first page. And our value increases are based on sales, including all of new construction. And see, that's all residential, single family homes in condominium units. The, our land increased because the state the state and town bought land for this fiscal year. So that was the increase there. We have more state and town owned land. Our manufacturing and commercial increase was due to sales and discovery from the written returns and physical discovery of inspections. And our top taxpayers now of real estate, the first two are apartments, the next two are commercial. And then in our top personal property taxpayers, four of them are located in the, so those were very good results for this fiscal year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Lot of work.
Yes.
And it was the board's vote to go single tax.
Yes. We're recommending a single tax.
No questions?
I move that the board vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter 4, subsection 56, to establish a single tax rate for all types of property in FY 2024.
Second, all in favor?
I.
I. Majority vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll stay here. Town manager's report.
I know, we're, uh, there's one more thing, seat free before, um, we get to town manager's report, acceptance of.
Oh, acceptance of housing works grant. Give us a little less than a minute.
Um, so, uh, Upton was very fortunate to receive 3.6, over 3.6 million dollars in state funding to support the construction of water and sewer infrastructure along Milford Street. Basically coming from the community center going all the way up to the, uh, the approved governor's landing that will also allow for connections for properties and additional development potential within that corridor. Uh, in Worcester County, we've received the most funding. That's ahead of Worcester and other much larger communities. So this is a big one for the town and is a, you know, infrastructure project that would have been really challenging to try to do on, on rate payers' shoulders. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of potential here. So the 3.6 on top of the 275,000 dollars we received last year, you know, we're just shy of $4 million for this project. Uh, so, uh, within the board's packet is, the state is already, uh, emailing us with contract language. So looking for the board to accept, uh, the grant and authorize the town manager to execute necessary contracts associated with that grant.
Okay. Questions?
No questions.
See, then, uh, we accept the motion.
I move that the board vote to accept 3.6 million housing works grant for extending water and sewer infrastructure on Milford Street and to authorize town manager to execute documents supporting the award as presented.
One question, should we have the exact amount of motion?
Um, I can give you the exact amount if you like. That is 3,620 and 615 dollars.
Chief, what do you want to say?
Yes.
I move that the board vote to accept the 3,620,615 dollar housing works grant for extending water and sewer infrastructure on Milford Street and to authorize town manager to execute documents supporting the award as presented.
Second, all those in favor?
I.
Majority vote. Town manager's report.
Okay, so, want to provide the board as well as presence with update on a couple of things going on in town as well as with town departments. Uh, first thing, the Fiscav water main project is going to be completed next week. Uh, there's a handful of connections of individual houses that finishing up. Then the project is going to wind down for winter, uh, and they're going to abandon the temporary services, and they're going to come back in the spring to finish punch list items as well as do lawn and driveway restorations. Uh, Grove Street Bridge, uh, work continues for permitting and design of the bridge, and that remains on schedule. Schedule that Dennis Westgate, DPW director, had reviewed the work previously. And he indicated that they are anticipating a mid to late winter bid day to, um, for that project. DPW is also doing its fall cleanup and winter prep. The Parks Division closed all the fields for the year and is performing much needed late season maintenance to ensure healthy fields in the spring. Irrigation systems have been shut down and winterized. Cemeteries are receiving winterization maintenance, including removal of leaves, final lumen seeding of graves, and staking of roadways for snow plowing. The DPW completed snow and ice preparation last week. Salt shed is full. Uh, they've hired contractors who are now turning in their final paperwork, and all the equipment is ready to roll. So that little dusting we had, we are ready for this winter. And according to our DPW director, we're going to get slenched today. So, uh, I, I hope, there's many things, I hope he's right about this. I hope he's drastically wrong. Uh, for the community center, uh, people who have been in the community center parking lot may have noticed that, uh, last week, we completed a ADA ramp. Uh, this is installed in a section of sidewalk that's adjacent to the senior center entrance. Uh, one of the things that we're also going to be doing, but this is going to have to wait until spring, is, uh, seal coating the remainder of the portion of the parking lot and restrypping to then designate two additional handicap parking spaces closer to the senior center side of the community center. Uh, we are also, we started communicating with National Grid to acquire, install the electric car charger as part of that, uh, that project. It's not funded through the project. It was just a space, and now we're working with National Grid, uh, to get the charger in, to get it installed. And, um, staff at the community center is seeing a lot of public interest in use of the community center. Uh, pretty much almost every weekend, the building is being used outside of normal community center hours. The, uh, Girl Scouts are using it on Sundays, and now other troops are looking at picking back them off of the hours they're using it. We've had events, um, sorry, celebrations after funerals, celebrations with birthdays, use the space. Uh, and got nothing but positive feedback from the people who have used that. So it's good to see. So it's good to see the, the facility is being used. Uh, Matthew is, uh, our library director is coordinating, um, uh, rather than my office sort of being the point person, found out that basically in the board's policy, identifying things through the town manager's office, everyone was talking to library staff. And then they had to reiterate everything to me and then I go and talk to Matthew. So, uh, we're, we're trying to revise the procedures and then we'll come back to the board with more of a refinement now that we know how the building is operating. Matthew is, is ser-, uh, safe service certified for some of these events where the library has been also open on Saturdays that they've used the facility. He's been there to sort of help out. We're learning a lot as far as what works for us, what doesn't, what are some of the needs of these participants? So we're gonna be coming back to the department with some proposed amendments to policies, buy some changes to rental fees and, um, uh, other things for having custodial services. Because, uh, we've definitely found for some of these that we really do need someone there, even if it's to reload, um, paper products and bathrooms and all those things of just, uh, there's always these other things that pop up. Um, uh, during events that we're finding there may be more of a need. So we're learning a lot as far as what is needed, uh, for running that building as well as accommodating some, uh, use of the great room. Town continues to have a number of open positions that are all on the town's website. We are searching for a new director of elder and social services, a new DPW department specialist, DPW heavy equipment operator, uh, labor position, DPW water wastewater operator, career firefighters, paramedics, per DM, EMT, paramedics, on-call EMTs and on-call firefighters. Um, so, uh, anyone that may know of, anyone that may wanna come work for the town, visit the town's website, talk to, uh, Sandy and myself. Uh, and, um, one of the things in this, this new world as far as filling municipal jobs, it's always connections. That seems to be how we've been successful with assembling our team. So if you know someone that knows someone, pass it along. That's, that's how we've been able to fill some of these positions, um, really successfully. Uh, tomorrow night is the second public hearing for the Upton Apartments forty B. The previous hearing was on October eighteenth. Uh, this is gonna be, uh, Wednesday, November fifteenth, six thirty in the Great Community Center. The library, starting on November twentieth, so that's next Monday, is changing their hours. So they're gonna be open from nine to four. Uh, so with some of the, the recent hires that is part of the FY twenty four budget, uh, they were able to expand their hours and provide more service to the community. So now on Mondays, the elder and social services COE department doesn't need to check out bucks for all the patrons that then come in on Mondays to go to the senior center and, but still wanna be able to access library services. So now we'll have uniform hours, uh, Mondays to Friday with both departments. And, um, we received some great news, uh, for, uh, through conservation. The mechanic street property that we acquired back in twenty twenty two, uh, Subbury Valley, Subbury Valley trustees were a great partner and, and pulling together fundraising with all the work that other, uh, volunteers in town did. Uh, Subbury Valley trustees received an anonymous donation of forty thousand dollars uh, to be used for constructing parking areas as well as trails within that property. Uh, so that's, that's a very nice, uh, donation that we received. And then lastly, just wanna sort of give a snapshot. This year has been really busy as far as staff being successful and getting grant funding. So in addition to that three point six million dollars, uh, we've received a total of nine separate grants through public safety. This is just calendar year twenty twenty three. Uh, nine separate public safety grants totaling four hundred and thirteen, uh, six hundred and fifty six dollars, uh, ninety thousand dollars worth of planning grants and one hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of grants supporting public, um, efforts for a total of four million, two hundred and thirty two, uh, sorry, four million, two hundred and thirty four thousand, two hundred and seventy one dollars. These are, are, uh, funds that really supplement a lot of the work with the department. And our staff does a great job looking for opportunities to really save taxpayers and in towns who are not going to request for, uh, these various projects. But these projects really are what helped move the town forward. So this has been a, a big year, uh, for receiving grants for the decade, so.
Questions?
No questions?
Questions? All made, if you need more?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
You open it up for public comment? Is there any public comment? Points to the mosquito control board. If you have a chance to go over all the applications, I do, yes. And I assume we have five. The five spots and five applications. That's a good thing. Round peg or round. That makes life easy. Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
I agree with you. They all, they're.
They all have experience.
Yeah.
They all have an impressive resume.
I will request a motion.
I will make the motion and if I butcher anybody's name, I apologize. I move that the board select and vote to appoint the following as members to the mosquito and tick control board. As follows, Alicia Burnett, Gavin Jones, Marcella Stacia, Gary Strickards and Christine Scott.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Majority vote.
Congratulations to all.
Congratulations. Seven B, use of the ARCA funds, premium K. Can you give an overview?
Sure, so, um, and, uh, do each of you have a printout for, uh, the motion for this?
I do. It was.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Sandy has a copy.
Three one?
So.
They look the last thing?
So, uh, I didn't, I did text with Brett and he said he didn't wanna have his absence hold things up.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, as, as a backdrop, coming through COVID, uh, federal government, uh, had a program, American Rescue Plan Act, uh, that funnels, um, COVID relief funds to municipalities, states, uh, to undergoing a number of projects. Uh, and they identified uses for these funds as well. Um, because of our size, we have a lot more flexibility. Uh, towns and municipalities that received under ten million dollars have a lot more flexibility to use it as revenue replacement rather than larger communities that had a much larger appropriation, that had more, uh, strings attached to how they could use it. So for us, we, we had a lot more flexibility, but the use of ARCA funds, one of the things that was allowed was used to provide premium pay for those who worked through COVID, uh, to, uh, per recognize and, and provide, uh, funds for that service during that COVID period of time. And this has been something that the board, uh, first started having discussions on potential use of premium pay of these funds for premium pay, former town, uh, manager, and then we've, we've worked on this on and off along with our other ARCA projects, uh, such as, uh, FIS, such as the bridge, uh, such as working with Grafton Upton Railroad for, uh, engineering services, uh, for using these ARCA funds. Uh, so, um, uh, what is, uh, proposed with the board right now is a ARCA premium plan, uh, that basically recognizes those employees who had worked and or worked and have since retired and are part of the Worcester Retirement, uh, Board System, uh, in, in recognition and appreciation for the work that they did here within town of Upton through the periods of March tenth, twenty twenty through June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. That is the period that the governor had identified, uh, the, um, state of emergency as related to, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, so, uh, that's what's before, before the board looking and from previous discussions, uh, using those as a flat, uh, stipend, uh, for those, uh, various eighty plus employees that fall with that category.
So somebody worked, but they left, they're not getting any rest. Only the people that worked are still working and are currently retired.
Correct.
I don't think I have questions. Okay. Motion. I move that the board vote to use a portion of the town's American Rescue Plan Act allocation totaling three hundred and ninety nine thousand, nine hundred dollars to provide a one-time payment to the current and retirees who retired through the Worcester Card Retirement System who worked for the town of Upton within the period of March tenth, twenty twenty through June fifteenth, twenty twenty one as follows. Full-time employees, a one-time amount of six thousand, two hundred, part-time, non-benefit eligible employees in an amount of three thousand one.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Majority vote. Now I wanna thank all the employees and I want them to know that they are much appreciated and valued. I'm glad we were able to do something like this.
So am I. I said, I hold on for a second.
Happy.
It's a nice presence out of here. It should help.
Should. Is it taxable?
Uh?
Is it taxable?
It is taxable, but because it's ARCA funds and that's what we have to, there has to be audit at the end that we have to run separate payroll for split.
Standard withholdings, it's just not subject to, um, uh, benefits.
Right.
And some tension.
Right, and it's not tensioned.
We have discussion on application for advanced sick leave policy.
Okay, so, um, the board's packet is material that, uh, is based off existing language within the DPW collective bargaining agreement, allowing employees to borrow time, sick time, um, outside of when they would normally be allocated sick time as a lump sum. So currently, uh, July first, the beginning of the new fiscal year, employees get, rather than having sick leave approved throughout the year, get a lump sum of a hundred and twenty hours. If for circumstances within the current fiscal year, so say right, um, someone did not have sick time or even was newly hired but had a need to use sick, they could apply to have some of that bank that would come, uh, that would be replenished July first. And theirs can seek approval from the town manager to have an advancement of that. So if someone needed twenty additional hours, they could seek approval to take, um, uh, an advancement of that amount coming in July first and have access to that now. Um, what, in talking with the board at previous meetings, we were trying to come up with, um, as the board had, had discussed, looking at the benefits that are associated with, around family leave. And we're, as we're working through some of these things, we want to try to identify ways to sort of free up and give more flexibility currently while we work on a broader policy that might take more time. So anytime we develop a policy that could potentially impact collective bargaining agreements, you know, we need to accommodate for that time and that process because we don't know what's gonna come out. So, um, staff had, had prepared the attached, um, uh, policy based on the DPW policy. And then met with personnel board last week, uh, to get their feedback. Our personnel policy establishes a procedure for adoption, adopting policies. And that is proposals are brought before the personnel board, uh, for their review and recommendation to then come to the board and selectmen to adopt or not. Um, so we got feedback from the personnel board saying, we're too fa-, uh, too favorable about this advancement. And they recommended a couple of changes, one either putting in some sort of limit or creating some sort of sick bank where employees could contribute time to then be used by, by people. One of the concerns that was raised was, and I'll just use myself as, as an example. If I was out of sick and I sought an advancement, um, of forty hours, that got approved and I had that. And I used that and then I left. There's not a, currently a payback process where realistically, when someone left, they, they basically are taking more benefit within that fiscal year that they worked than they really would have had for other employees. So, uh, the, the personnel board had raised that as, uh, like, essentially a liability that, um, is at an expense that the town would then be out of these funds because we paid sick time. Um, that was an advancement from a new fiscal year. So that was one of the, the, the scenarios that they used to say, maybe we need to take a closer look. And that's where proposing more of a sick bank where then other employees within the town can contribute sick that then someone can request. Um, but that mechanism, how it relates to the total sick leave policy, that'll probably take some time to figure out. Um, you know, we have a cap. People can't approve more than three hundred and twenty hours of sick. Um, we pay for a short-term disability, so that, that three hundred and twenty, which is basically eight weeks, can really be stretched more than what that three twenty looks like. But can you donate, once you hit that max, using myself as another example, if I was at the max, come July first, I'm getting another hundred and twenty, but if I'm already at my max, that, that hundred and twenty sort of goes poof. Those hours that go poof, do we apply that to the bank? Is it only for, for the amount, say up to three twenty that can be donated? So there's some of those, those things that we just have to work through. Um, so originally putting this on the agenda, um, thought that there may have been more consensus around using that DPW model. Uh, but since we didn't come out of there with a recommendation, wanted to bring that forward as far as discussion point, as far as, you know, do we wanna look at more of a, a sick bank and providing Sandy and I with, uh, direction to maybe work on and maybe, um, touch base with one of the personnel or members so that at least we can refine that for their December meeting. And I wasn't present, but, but Sandy was, so she might be able to add some additional things that came up as part of that, that meeting as well.
Yeah. Um, they, they really warned us and we were really uncomfortable because, um, borrowing from a sick bank, there, there is no way that you can get paid, you can't get paid back. So that was a lie, there was returns to it. Um, you know, really, all points, Joe mentioned, it was clearly the, the, it was, it was the, no one had a doubt, totally that. And they would, um, also felt that it wasn't inclusive and they would like to see more of a, a policy, uh, a, a policy that comfort and compass more. So instead of piecing away, that just maybe take some time to come up with a, um, a family leave policy.
So that, that's the other side is, is the board having the discussion about having a narrowly focused policy that the personnel board, um, wanted to see more inclusive, that then maybe had it for, uh, for family members that are taking care of, um, sick, uh, children or parents. So, um, may just need to sort of have more of a dis- discussion and maybe even a joint meeting to sort of identify the parameters. Um, I do know that one of the. Um, I do know that one of the, the reasons for this, um, uh. For, for taking a look, um, I think we've already addressed, so there's not like the impending need. Um, because of anyone being on leave, um, uh, but with the personnel board wanting to. Have that more inclusive look, um, you know, that may be a workshop discussion and thinking about some of these, these things.
Did you talk to the personnel board?
They, they were the ones that raised the issue. They're, they're the ones that raised the concept of.
They said that one alternative?
Yeah.
Well, if you got a hundred and twenty hours. Like at the end of the year, how many can you carry for two weeks? Eighty?
You can, once you hit three twenty, you can.
Your account.
Yeah, your account. So when we get our allocations July 1st, there's some.
You start at three twenty and you lose the hundred.
Right.
So it would be best to put it in silver.
That's, that becomes one of the, the questions as far as, you know, and are there limits around that? I mean, realistically. Um, one of the things that sick time traditionally is, is viewed at because, um. Any significant use of sick is usually in personnel policies, um, identified of a larger, larger issue. You have vacation time, you have other time. We're really flexible as far as using sick for taking care of kids. You have to take the doctor's appointment, um, in any community, sick can be abused. And, but that usually is dealt with on the HR side because if someone's out every single Monday. Or, or on a Friday, that's usually a trend and that's not what sick time is for.
No.
So.
We do have the short-term disability.
Correct.
So if somebody's on medical condition, they're not using their sick bank, they're using short-term disability for their own medical condition, not to twenty-six weeks. They also have the ability to, um, in the town case, a hundred percent of the short-term disability policy. They also come with long-term disability policy for their own medical condition as well. So it's just, there's so many pieces to the puzzle that we want to get it right this first time and want to be inclusive. Um, so that, and, and find out what the employees want as well. The difference with the, um. The policy that the DPW has, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, that the DPW would accrue sick time on a monthly basis.
That's correct.
Okay, um, in the CBA, so it's monthly. So they're catching up to their, um. They're not going to be negative too long if they borrow against the bank because they, they can catch up or begins. Um, if this policy isn't personnel policy and procedure enable, we front load it. So, you know, there's a, a large liability and.
So DPW would accrue ten on a, on a, yes. Uh, they're not moving it monthly.
No, that when they're, uh, when they're out, anyone out on leave does not accrue, um, benefits.
On disability.
On, yeah.
It's disability.
Right.
I think it makes sense to step in personality of a working person. And, and, uh, because there's no, there's no going back and forth and hopefully we can come to meeting in the minds and they.
It is, it is.
It is, it's still a lot of moving parts.
Very sensitive and emotional.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And I think there is general recognition that, um, you know, we're. And what making Upton attractive to employees, it's not going to be the highest dollar. It's some of the other things that we can be a little creative about as the board, what, as the board talked about. So, um, having that conversation with personnel, you know, one, it's, it's going to last for back and forth for, for. Um, coming to some sort of agreement that otherwise could take months of sort of back and forth and. Us working on something presented to them, them then coming back to you saying, well, that's, goes a little too far and kicking it back. So. Something like this, especially given, you know, the board's, uh, prior discussions. Um, having a workshop with them on and to, to really just talk about concepts and see what, what their thoughts are. You know, should be able to.
State problems are probably be changing, um, as well. Um, right now, town municipalities, we don't. Piece that are exempt from pay gap, I believe. So it's on the horizon and that's going to change. So we want to be kind of ahead of that, um, so that it's not dictated to us and we have a policy. There's a lot of moving parts.
This, this already, I've seen, um, uh, news articles, mainly through MMA where. Um, people in the administration as well as some lawmakers are, are raising an issue that. Um, state as well as municipal employees should fall under this. So this exemption could go away. May not happen for a year or two, but realistically, you know, them raising these issues. Just like how multiple, whether it's Democrat or Republican administrations have identified housing. That's a significant issue in the state. I, I think that's something that we're going to be met faced with, having a decision taken away and that. Always, I guess you're going to have to do something.
Think we could set up some things personally?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll definitely be able to, um, I'll, I'll want to sit down with you more into sort of see. That second meeting we talked about in workshop. Um, nice thing is it gives us a lot of flexibility to talk. Bad thing is then we're talking for five hours and want us. Want to be able to identify what we want to accomplish and if it ends up being a second workshop, we do it. Yep.
I'd rather do it sooner, later, than something.
Oh, exactly. Anything that then is important that because we are going to be coming up with, um, reviewing our collective bargaining agreements. Um, anything that we can try to get movement and a priority sooner versus later, it's definitely support.
Next, we have twenty twenty-four alcohol license rules.
No questions? Would you like to hear the motions?
Yeah.
There you go. I'm catching on. I move that the board vote to approve the following liquor license renewal applications. Contingent on successful inspections for the following. Susima Pulp, which is Florida liquor, Country Club Super, Selena Salon Inc., Liquor Plus. By Grill, Yip La Vrada, Red Rock Grill and Bar. Pointe Grill LLC, The Rose Garden, and Rushford's and Son.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're ready to vote? Have you had a chance to read the minutes?
I did. And my questions, um, there was just one transposition where instead of DPW, it was a DDP. And instead of lakes, instead of ponds, instead of lakers, which I think it was all spell checked. So. With those two very minor visions, which I emailed to Sandy because I'm a pain in the butt, um. I move to approve the minutes as submitted and I don't have dates in front of me. Um, so.
October seventh, no, sorry. Uh, it was September nineteenth, October third, October seventeenth, and November twelfth. Yes. Okay. Second, all those in favor of that? Right. Aye. You're ready to vote? Okay. I guess I'll say it. I make a move about a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight P M. I'll second.